Morning.
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 All right. Betsy, I think we're all set to start.
Okay, great. This is the December 8th, 2020 Rules and Policies Committee meeting. It's 8:31 a.m. I am the Chair, Betsy Gleistine. I'll call the role of the other two members. John Kludier?
Yeah.
Sorry.
You are?
John Anderson.
Here.
Okay, and we have with us our staff support, Liam Gallagher. Liam, do we have anybody on so far from the public?
We do not.
Okay, Liam, would you mind bringing up the agenda and the minutes to share on the screen?
No. Not sure if I have the minutes. I know I have the agenda. Let me do a quick search here, Betsy. I apologize.
Yep, no, that's all right. I'll do one as well. I might get to it before you do.
Do we know if Tony, did Tony send those out to us, Councillor Gleistine?
She normally puts them in the drive. It's a little bit of an awkward process sometimes to find them.
No, my fault.
And they are in the drive.
They are, okay.
Yeah.
I'm almost there. I just, I had to switch computers right before the meeting. So everything I had up on the other computer is not.
These are for the March 10th meeting. I feel like we've met since then, but maybe, maybe I'm.
Yeah, I see something for September.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. I'm looking at the September folder, yeah.
Yeah, but that's just the, that's just the agenda, I think.
Yeah.
So I would say we don't have minutes for the September meeting right now. It was a pretty quick meeting, but Liam, do you want to follow up with Tony on that?
I will.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good, all right. Is it possible for you to bring the agenda up, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Here's a little bit slow this morning as well.
So while we're waiting on that, I think, you know, basically, the goal of today, you know, we had, we had one thing in front of us last year, which was the Charter Commission Process and Policy. And at the beginning of the last, when we first started out last year, we kind of talked about what else this committee would do and what their role would be for this committee. And I thought it would be helpful to go over that again and to maybe see if there's any areas that we want to take a look at or change, you know, within, within timeframes, reasonable timeframes. So I had one area that I was, had some questions on, and I thought perhaps we could, we could start there. And I can bring that up on my screen if that's of value. And John, you may have some good insights into this as well. So I'm not sure that it's best way to share my screen.
So Betsy, the, just, so the, is everyone seeing the agenda for this meeting? Okay. So really, item four is, I guess, where we're at, and that's the, the organization meeting. So that's what you're talking about right now?
Yep.
Okay. If you want to, so I'll stop sharing now that we've.
Well, I tell you what, I think it's probably just as easy for you to share it. So if you go to the town website, and you go to the, the government tab, the government dropdown, and go to Town Ordinances.
And where do you want me to go from here?
Just that, just that screen.
Okay.
So, John, I'm, have, have both of you read 302? The, the Rules and Policies for Town Council 302?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so that to the PDF document, it says one of the things we're supposed to do is periodically look over 101. And so I guess I had some questions around, you know, what is in 101? I see like, I know last year, we, we kind of changed the smoking policy into an ordinance, but it's still listed here on, under 101. The social media policy is listed twice under 101. We have a debt management and fiscal policy here. I don't see the CEA policy here. This where you guys would expect to see the CEA policy? I guess, you know, it's a little bit of a struggle for me to kind of figure out where we're supposed to be focused and if there's any focus that we might want to change on that. So I'm looking at this 101 town adopted policy.
Yeah. Can I just, can I just chime in as, chime in as kind of the newbie? Who just, so I went, I went to 101, and I kind of had maybe a similar reaction to Betsy of just trying to basically understand, like, how do we define the scope of 101? And, and sure that the things that are in here are within scope? Or are we adding the right things? Because again, when I look at it, it feels like it's a little bit of a catch-all for all kinds of different things that are being done. And I just, I'm trying to understand the rationale for what goes in here, why it goes in here, what doesn't go in here, and why doesn't it go in here? You know, like Betsy mentioned, a couple of policies, and then like even things like resolutions. Do those belong in here?
And I would even take a step back from that, because this is the website. But is there an official book that you know of, Liam? Because I've asked for history on a few things and not, not had a lot of luck. And I'm just wondering if, you know, is there official document guide for this? In terms of, you know, these are past policies that have been passed, you know, and here's all the resolutions. I know I was, I mean, this is, this is more of a topic for Finance Committee, but, which I think is the same three people. Maybe we should just have one meeting, you know, about the history of the reserve policies, you know, the history of the reserve accounts, how they were established and when they were established. And so I'm not, I'm, it's, I'm not being critical if we do or don't have those things, but I think it's important to figure out if we do have them. And if we don't have them, you know, do we want an official hard copy of these things? You know, with a running list? Or do we want the website to be the place? And John Kluchy, let me ask you, would you expect to see the CEA policy here that we passed, or?
Yeah, I would expect it to, this would be the home. So I was, when I started, John, I was confused about, I thought these were all ordinances in Chapter 101, and I remember some go back and forth between me and Colette. But it turns out there was no logical place for them to store town policies. So they just called, they just created 101 to make it easier to put on the website and allow people to access those things. But I don't think there was a whole lot more thought put into it than, than that. It just seemed like a good place to put it. And, you know, the, the rest of these, you know, these chapters are actually ordinances, right? So when you get into Chapter.
Not all of them, John, I don't think, because like, well, maybe they are, yeah. Yeah.
I think everything, yeah. Outside of 101 is an ordinance, and 101's, those are policies. So my understanding.
302 is a policy and 30.
It's actually an ordinance, though.
All right.
I believe we go through a two-meeting process to adopt, to make changes to 302.
Right, right. But we call it, we put it under as a manual, and we call it, you know, Chapter 302. So it probably is an ordinance, but it's not real clear when you look at it.
Most certainly it is. 101 is exclusively a repository for all council policies that don't have the same stature or weight as an ordinance. This was done about four or five years ago as a way of codifying and cleaning up. And I think for the express purpose that I'm hearing you discuss this morning, for organization purposes, so you know, one, one, one spot for all policies. And clearly, the CEA policy needs to be added to this. That was an oversight.
And so I know, I know what started off when I was a little bit confused about it. If you open up under 101 Smoke-Free Beaches, it actually says it's a resolution. So it wasn't actually even a policy. I think now we've turned that into an ordinance. So my other question was, you know, when do we repeal policies? Or do we just leave them in place? And this wasn't really a policy, it was a resolution.
I think that's kind of our job, Betsy, is if we see something that's no longer relevant or in compliance with state law, then we should be bringing it forward to.
To bring that.
Or our staff to be, you know, periodically reviewing for the same.
Yep. Okay, no, that sounds good. What do you think, John Anderson, Johnny?
I think that makes sense. Like, I, I'd like to just kind of, like, I've started to read all of these just to kind of understand what's in them and what they are. But I agree, like, I think there's probably a need to figure out what's the best way to kind of do a review. What are our priorities? And how do we want to kind of look at these? Like, some of these might be newer, so maybe less likely to need a review. But let's see if, as we go through these, we're seeing some outdated material that we might need to determine, does this still stand as a policy? Does it need to be repealed? Is there an ordinance now that, that covers this, that we don't need it? You know, I think we can do some cleanup if we need to.
Right, and I think what's going to be the official, I mean, is, is this spot here going to be considered the official? And should there be any kind of policies and procedures for taking things, adding things, and putting things here? I guess, because one of my concerns is if something, say, disappears from here, it, it almost feels like it'll no longer be a policy. Like, someone with institutional memory at some point might say, well, you had a policy on that at some point. And maybe there is an official list somewhere, Tom, you know, that says these are, this was the date, this was the council that passed it, here was the name of the policy, here was the purpose of what it did.
No, there's nothing, nothing that exists like that.
Yeah.
We have the minutes from the council meetings.
Everything.
From the council, correct?
I will say that for ordinances that are amended, you'll notice, and just, Liam, just select any ordinance. Open one up. As amendments are done, there's a historical record typically on the, on the face page. It'll say original enacted, enacted date, and then as amended, there you go.
Yeah.
So, but to answer your question, Betsy, there's no repository for you to find all of those amendments in one spot. You would need to search meeting minutes by the dates.
And I think for ordinances, that, that kind of works. I don't think an ordinance is just going to disappear, you know, if you know what I mean.
But what, what's your interest, just the historical record? If a policy is repealed or replaced, or just, you know, done away with for whatever reason, it no longer applies. And so are you just interested in the historical value of?
No, I guess I don't really trust the website. I mean, I see the social media policy is there twice. The, you know, the CEA policy, apparently there wasn't really a procedure for adding that. I just think we should do a little bit better record-keeping of these policies, because they're not ordinances and they don't carry the same weight. And, you know, I think it would be good to know when they come and go, you know, so that you could have one list where people look and say, okay, this was repealed. Why did they repeal it? You know, it might say became an ordinance, incorporated into ordinance. I think having to, you know, go back and, you know, so these don't, these policies don't, as far as I can tell, they don't even, they don't even really reference the town meetings, you know, the town council meetings, where, oh, that one does, adopted 2016. I'm not sure they all do that. But I, that's just me. I mean, I, you know, I've done document management some for a living. And so it just, it just seems like if, if something were to disappear from this tab, I don't know that anybody would know that it existed.
I mean, to your point, we, maybe we need to create a policy for policy creation and just align on what we expect that process to look like. And then that would include talking about, you know, maybe even amending, like, the, the things we want to see in these policies going forward for consistency. But also, as they retire, how do we store and make them publicly available? Because to your point, there could be a tab on here that's just retired policies, where people could go back and see anything that was retired with maybe some short justification of why it was retired.
Right.
What, what's important about that? If, if a policy is no longer in force, what, what's the, what's the need to research that and understand the historical?
The need for that is, so let's say council says, hey, we really need a policy on that. And we've already done it in the past, and there was reasons why it got taken out. You know, that history is very valuable to any current council to not waste their time or to, to re, to look at a policy within context. You know, we don't need this policy because we can, you know, we, we've already done it. It got incorporated into this ordinance, you know. So to me, the history is impo, is important.
So maybe you could have a 101A, that's Town Council Repeal Policies, as just a, a place to, to keep the paper trail or the audit trail? I don't have a big issue with that. I think that's fine. And, and John, to your point, yeah, maybe we should put some definition around how things get in here. It's probably in a bunch of different places right now, in, you know, our rules and procedures. But it might make sense to put one document. This is the policy adoption process. And this is how we'll track those documents. And, and maybe it does make sense to, you know, include a revision history at the, at the header of each policy.
Yeah. Is there, is there, is there, is there something similar that exists already today for ordinances that we could just leverage versus trying to recreate the wheel? Like, do we have a clear policy on ordinance? That we could just, again, try and like leverage as a best practice versus, you know, trying to think about something different here?
I'm not aware. Tony, as your town clerk, really is the, is the keeper of all these. So she really should be part of this conversation, can, this, this is her world.
That's a good point.
Yep.
I just have two comments, I guess. So one, as we kind of peruse these various policies, it does look like, for the most part, there's pretty good documentation about when it was adopted by the council or amended, if it's applicable.
Right, yeah.
So that, that's helpful. I also just wonder, from an organizational standpoint, whether, you know, they're all, they're also titled this one generic 101. I wonder if it would just be helpful to assign some additional. So, you know, to, to Betsy's point, if, you know, if 101D is all of a sudden missing, maybe it will, you know, I don't know, maybe there's some, some volume or some other sort of just categorizing that we could do that might give some comfort that if something just disappears, it will be somewhat obvious that it's disappeared.
Yeah, that's a good thought.
And there may also be an opportunity to, I mean, again, it seems like there may be some organization here, you know, debt management. You know, you have kind of varying policies, and you might be able to further organize it by, you know, are these sort of council financial policies? Are these, you know, again, you have a sidewalk policy here, pest management, so sort of almost land use policies. You know, so there might be some additional opportunity to do some of that.
Right, and, you know, policies are super helpful, because, I mean, you operate by them. And then, you know, at some point, you might decide that they should be an ordinance. I, I feel they play a really valuable role. And, you know, I like that idea of organizing them kind of into what, what they are and who they impact, or something like that, with whichever one. And just to make it a little easier to follow, I think. You know, yeah, it would be good to see, you know, if anything kind of disappeared. I mean, do, you know, I guess it would be a good question out to Tony, you know, how does this list look to her? Is, does there seem to be anything missing? Because she probably doesn't go to the website all the time to take a look at it. You know, she would probably have a different record-keeping system of the policies. And, you know, just to make sure everything got ported over. And, you know, we're not missing any policies here. Because there's no, there's no standing list, you know, that we could just really go to and, and see. So, you know, I just, past councils would have done a lot of work to create a policy, pass a policy, and there would have been a reason why they did it. So, you know, if there's something not here, I would really personally want it here, you know, because, you know, we, we build our processes unprecedented. So that's just, that's just my thought there. So it might be good to follow up with Tony and make sure that this list did come over correctly. She doesn't feel like there's anything missing there.
I guess just one other comment, I guess, you know, regarding, you know, if there's a policy that's adopted and then subsequently repealed, you know, I certainly think it's, it's probably, you know, helpful to have a section for repealed policies, the way, you know, if you peruse state statutes, they still kind of retain listings of statutes that have been repealed. But I think that as long as there's a date in that repeal, you know, repealed by council, September 2nd, 2020, then anyone who's, who's inquisitive as to why could go back and, you know, either watch the meeting or review the minutes, perhaps garner what the explanation is. I, I just, you know, it seems a little bit awkward to provide a narrative as to the justification for why it was repealed.
Yeah, I totally agree with that. I think the minutes of meetings is where you should go back for a lot of detail. You know, I don't, I don't think you need overly tracking. That's, that's my personal opinion.
So it seems to me that, just looking at these, you know, you sort of have three, and again, I think the first term would probably be inappropriate. But, you know, as you sort of have land use, right? So you have a stop sign policy, you have the beach, smoking beaches policy, you have a sidewalk policy, you have financial policies, and then you sort of have these administrative policies. And I think that all of these would probably fit in one of those three buckets. Not to say that there wouldn't be a policy in the future that, that doesn't fit in one of those buckets, but that seems to be, just from my perspective.
Can you say those again, Liam?
So you have, I would say sort of land use. You know, again, land use probably isn't the right term, but something that indicates that this is sort of out in the general public, you know, holiday signs and crosswalk marking policy, your, your beaches policy. Then you have your financial policies where perhaps tax-acquired policy, tax-acquired property, public safety capital improvement account, you have your, your fund balance policy, your debt management policy. This is where obviously the, the CEA policy would go. And then you really have capital planning, then you really have your administrative policies, you know, council correspondence, legal services, FOAA. You know, I think that they all kind of, I think, anyway, they, I would offer that up as perhaps a way to organize these a little bit better.
What'd you guys think about that?
I think, go ahead, John, or go ahead, John.
And, and maybe it's just coming up with, you know, a word to put after 101, you know, 101 finance, and then list that policy or 101. There's not that many of them here. It was interesting that you have the, the original finance policy and then a separate document for the amended policy, the debt management fiscal policy. So I, and that's something that we could do throughout the course of the year, too, Betsy, is just, you know, pick a handful of these policies to kind of go through, and are they relevant?
Kind of what the school board does, they never stop going through the policies, you know. And it doesn't, it doesn't have to be fast, but you have to clean them up. And, and, you know, I think that would be an opportunity to see if we think there should be anything new. I know something as new counselors that comes up. I could be missing it, because it's hard to search. But there's not been anything that I could really find on email or electronic communication. We've had some discussion about, you know, whether or not we can run little internal surveys between staff and council members, what's appropriate for email, what's not appropriate for email. There might be other tools that, you know, we're interested in using that would get information out to the public. I know that Paul, you know, started publishing his, his, his counselor update. That might be something we want to codify. And I know that that's kind of low-key right now, because it's kind of down several trails on the email, but, I mean, on the website. But that might be something that, if we find that valuable, you know, a future, the great thing about a policy is future councils can more easily change policies than ordinances. But it also says, hey, here's some standards that worked for this council. And, you know, we're thinking that perhaps it's good for other councils to adopt this. So, you know, if the chair publishing, you know, the update to the council is something that's working, it's something we, we might want to put in a policy. And it would get more publicity, publicity, for one thing, so more people would know we're doing it and that it's out there. And then we would decide as a council, is this something we want to pass forward to, to future councils? Or is this something we say, no, this is our councils doing this? We don't want it as a policy. But, you know, so future councils can either, either do it or drop it. I know, you know, we have some things like this in Rules and Policies already in the manual. But, you know, I know in another context where I was involved, you know, we passed a policy for meeting notices, and, you know, it worked really well. So we didn't want other future councils to drop it, you know. So we didn't make it an ordinance, but it was a policy, and they would have had to have a meeting to change it.
Yeah. So my, my question would be, Betsy, like, some of the stuff you're mentioning, having read 302 yesterday, feels like some of them, some of your ideas may belong in 302 versus its own policy. So I guess where do we draw that distinction to say, this is its own policy and this is more part of 302?
Yeah, I agree. I think that that's some of this work maybe to do. What do you think?
302 is an ordinance.
John C. All right, so to change anything there would have to be an ordinance procedure.
So what does that mean for us? Does that mean as Rules and Policies, we, we review, we offer recommendations to ordinance, and they take it from there?
Because it's. No, I, I think it's still ours, but you just have to have a public hearing and a.
Okay.
First read, second read.
So just a different.
Probably, you know, at least for me, and I can't really just say why, I guess, that's, so that's not really fair. But, you know, something like, I just mentioned, an email policy or, you know, the, the chair publishing the, the weekly reports. I personally wouldn't want that as an ordinance. I think it should be, it might be good to codify if, if, if we think something is valuable like that. But I would, I would want future councils to, to be able to fairly easily change something like that. That would just, that would just be me, if, if we even put it in a policy. I'm not even saying shit, but I do like the tool of a policy in that it really puts structure around something and kind of gives history and precedence without actually tying the hands as much of the, of a future council. That's just my perspective on it.
Yeah. So that might be a better way to go about it, is to read 302, see where there are sections that maybe need some more policy definition that we could create some sort of guidance to say, you know, because there are sections on email. But if we want to take that a step further and provide additional process or, or guidance, then we could, I guess the question would be like, what are those areas? And what's our priorities? And where would we want to focus?
Right, yeah. And I think, you know, the other value of a policy is you get to use it a little bit before it becomes an ordinance, because once it's an ordinance, it's a lot harder to change as it, as it should be. So even if we came up with a, an ordinance change, I almost wonder if we'd want to have it as a policy first, and then see operationally how well it works. And if it doesn't, it's much easier to change. What should I call you, John C?
Whatever you like, Betsy.
What do you think, John C? I can't, because everybody's like, oh, just, well, that, oh, so I, so I think we said you would be Jonathan.
Like, that's, that's like what my mom calls me when she's.
All right.
You can just call me Anderson.
Okay, and then Clucci, got it, that's easier.
At, at the end of three O two, um, there's a policy matrix. That goes through the different, you know, what, whether it's a, a rule or an order or a resolution.
Really good, yep.
Um, and it, that gives a little structure to, you know, what's the precedent? Does it relate to the charter? Does it relate to state law and, and what's the process to enact it? It's handy. I, I think it, there's a lot of information in that little graphic there.
And I, I do think it would be good document management. I think, John, you meant, uh, uh, Anderson, I think you mentioned this. That I think it would be good to have a, a spot on the website where we do show the resolutions we pass. Because they, they do talk to our values, right? Um, there have been many over the years, you'd, certainly they're in the minutes, but, um, personally, I think pulling them out into one. Document location would not be a bad idea, um, and just kind of give. Uh, I wouldn't go backwards maybe, but, or, or maybe past maybe three years or some kind of timeframe, two years or something. Um, but I, I think it would be nice to be able to see all the resolutions in one, in one location.
There's not many. Some years there's none, most years there's no more than two, so. I just speak to my tenure here, but I, that's a seldom used. Sentiment of council.
Okay, so it should be pretty easy to pull those out then in one place because we're not talking tons of them. And it could be future councils decide to do more resolutions, you know, who knows? Um, so then the other topic I think is the, um. Is the three O two A, which is, um, if you bring that up, Liam, it's under three hundred. And it's the town council boards and committees. So we had talked about this last year to see. Um, you know, if it was something that this, this committee wanted to do. To see if there's any consistency that we want to put around boards and committees, um, or any kind of changes. You know, I'll give one example, like, I really believe that the long range planning committee meetings should be recorded. They're now recorded, they weren't previously being recorded. Um, so I feel like they could go back to not being recorded. Um, we know that. There, um, is, uh, I can not know if it's an ordinance or a policy, but that ordinance has to be recorded, finance has to be recorded. Council meetings have to be recorded and planning board has to be recorded. I personally would put long range planning committee in that section. Um, because it's a charter committee and it's a very consequential committee. Um, but I don't know where we'd go about doing that. Would it be in three O two A? Would it be something this committee would bring forward? Would a counselor just say, I'll take it directly to, uh, to committee? Um, so, uh, I'd like to get thoughts on that. And I, I know we talked about that. The specific charge or mandate of this committee is one O one and. The rules and policies manual, so I'm wondering if we want to even propose to update that to say that. You know, uh, you know, occasionally, because I think the way it states about one O one is that we'll occasionally look through policies and see if they need updates. That that might be something three O two A, we would occasionally look through. Um, you know, committee, uh, existing committees to see if they need updates. And obviously, we don't make any choices on our own. Everything would go to council, no matter what we do, but.
Well, logically, oh, sorry, logically, it just feels like if, if. We're responsible for three O two. When I hear three O two A, I think of that as like an addendum or a subset of three O two. So to me, it just feels like it makes sense that it's within scope of this group. To do something with three O two A, I don't know what that something is, but it feels like it's within scope.
Yes, I think it's natural extension.
No, I was gonna go the other way. Actually, I kind of view three O two A relating more towards appointments and negotiations. And I know that they're already going through, I think, a process now to understand if some of the committee should be consolidated. So I, I think they're kind of working in that space right now.
Well, I'm, I'm on that committee now, um, and I think they did that work last year. I think they're, they're pretty much done with that. Um, part of this kind of came up because there's a, uh. You know, there's the long range planning committee and. There's just kind of an interesting thing about that. Um, so the, the charter. Um, and I actually have a document on it, it's, I don't think it's worth sharing my screen, but I've got the sections picked out on the charter. In the charter, um, it actually says, and I'll just read it. Um, the long range planning committee shall consist of five regular members and two alternate members appointed by the town council. Um, the charge for the long range planning committee says. Um, it shall consist of five regular members and two alternates appointed by the town council. The regular members and alternate members must be residents of the town or real property. So some people said. Uh, of real property within, and then the long range planning committee, uh, shall be advisory. Uh, see, I'm sorry, I'm missing the part where, oh, that's the charter, so that it's, it's five members. The charge says that two of the mem- voting members will be, uh, one will be a sitting town counselor and one will be a planning board member. So we actually only have three regular members from the public. Um, so I've been talking to some people to say, you know, this is a very consequential committee. Um, and a lot of the other, um, committees, the, the other, other sitting officials who will get a vote. On a lot of the work that the LRPC does, like a town council on the planning board. Um, would actually be, uh, you know, advisory, maybe you want to make them a little more advisory, uh, than advisory. But that would open up two additional seats to regular, to, to regular members. Um, I'm not saying that we should talk about this right now, um, but. Um, the appointments and committees, you know, felt that this should definitely be talked about by rules and policies, not them. And I know that, you know, within the, um, rules and policies manual, you know, it talks about how town council appoints. You know, and, and w- reviews the members. So. I, I could see it going either way, um, right now. Uh, they don't seem inclined to do it, but, you know, I could, I could push back, uh, and say, you know. Do you guys want to take on the cleanup if there is any, you know, should we all, should, for example, should we say? You know, every committee should have a chair. Do we want to do that? Do we not want to do that?
That's what, it already says that. Um, I mean, the purpose of three O two A, I don't know the exact chronology, but it's fairly recent. It's within the last five, no more than seven years. And it was done exclusively to pull together. Uh, and organize, uh, you know, as councils would create these advisory committees, they would just kind of. Be created and then off in the ether, they, they didn't kind of exist anywhere. So we've consolidated them all into this one area. In addition, we've, we've, we've couched, um, all of it with expectations of all of them in terms of. Notice, public notice of meetings, uh, regular agendas, meeting minutes, uh, leader, you know, election of chair. So, you know, to your earlier point of requiring some to be recorded. Uh, this in my mind would be where, you know, that, that expectation would be, um, included.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. The only reason I said thing about the chairs is because Jay told me that, I guess, LRPC was really operating without a chair until two thousand seventeen. So maybe that was the timeframe when this was pulled together. Um, yeah, so I, I think it works for this committee, I, you know, so I. I mean, can you be persuaded, Clucci, that maybe it does?
I, I don't mind taking it up. But either way, we have, it, it would have to go through the council to, uh, to pass something, so.
Right.
So what are you suggesting that we go through the, you know, three O two A and just see that, ma- make sure that it still makes sense or is relevant?
Well, and if somebody has, I think if somebody has a change, like, um, you know, like I was proposing, long range planning committee would be recorded. You know, that they could bring it to our committee, um, and we would take it up and send a recommendation or not to council. So it might not necessarily be just making sure everything is clean, but, you know, bringing forward changes. I know, like, the two ad hoc committees. Um, and again, I mean, you don't want to slow things down too much, but. Um, I, I, I requested a charge change to increase the size of that committee. Um, so, you know, that might be something. If we did take, if we did take on three O two A and if that was in part of our official role, you know, where somebody could have brought that first. I just think it's kind of nice to be able to talk things out at committee to kind of get feedback on what people think of an idea before. You have to kind of start working it to try to see if it should go to council, if you know what I mean.
Yeah, I, I mean, it sounds like you have some s- specific things that you want to enact. I, I was trying to think, is there a way to attack this more, a little more generally or broadly?
No, I agree with you. It should be more generally broad. I was sorry, I was using specific examples. Just to say these types of things, not, I didn't mean to make it so specific, sorry about that.
And, and each of them could have a conversation, like when you talk about recording meetings, while we're in the Zoom world now, but if we revert back. And I'm not saying we will, but it could happen. There's a lot of uncertainty there. It's, it's kind of a big ask to, uh, to have those meetings recorded. You have to have staff on, onsite and, uh, so, uh, that's something that needs some deliberation, I think, and some discussion.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, and I, I don't think we want to say every, every meeting should be recorded, but just one, this one additional committee. But, you know, I don't know, you know, like you say, sometimes we talk about the ad hocks and maybe that should be. Part of the policy that would say the council, you know, when they charge the committee will determine whether the meetings are recorded. Because I, I know, like with the community center committee, um, people ask me, can that be recorded? You know, can I see a recording of it? You know, and I said, well, I don't know, not really. There's some limitations to it, so, um, it's, it's probably worth it, a, a larger discussion, yeah. So what, how do you think we would be able to get, get there? Because, I mean, I agree with you, John, three O two A is not specifically listed for this committee. Should we change that or should we just say, because, like Tom explained, they pulled it under here specifically, I think. As, as sort of a subset of three O two. Do you think that we should, we should propose that change?
That, you know, during your, um, committee update at the next council meeting, just give everybody a heads up that you intend to take it up. And if there's no dissent, then I think we're clear to, to take it up and then put it on an agenda and, you know, let's put some structure on how we look at it.
Okay. All right, that sounds good. What do you think, Anderson?
I think it makes sense.
Okay.
I mean, I do think, you know. It's, you're, you're on, you said you're on the appointments and negotiations committee, Betsy?
Yep.
So just having you on both will at least help us kind of have that balance to know. What we're doing and, and bring that to that group if necessary to make sure that it's not. You know, stepping on their toes or, or maybe, maybe in some cases, we might need to ask them to do something to help us as we kind of work through. Um, some of the ideas we might have.
Right. I think, you know, they also have negotiations and, um. Uh, Dawn is also bringing forward the poli- you know, the process, which you guys will hear about soon to get Tom's eval done. So they have other work to do, so I think they really kind of wanted rules and policies to focus on. Rules and policies, and they wanted to focus on composition. Um, and structure around, um, negotiations and some structure around, um. The whole process of, uh, dates for when appointments happen and all of that. I think we're actually going to meet a second time. They may feel differently a little later in the year if their, their work lightens up, um, but. There's, this is a big year for negotiations, as Liam will attest to, um, all the fire dispatch and police are all coming up. For, um, renewal. So I think they feel like with the negotiations part in their. In their work, that this work belongs better to us.
Can I, can I have a question, or can I ask a question kind of separate that came up for me as I was reviewing some of this stuff again, that just might be. A future area of clarification as we kind of work through this. So when it came to the ad hoc committees and the assignments. You know, when I read section three O two or chapter three O two. It felt like the process we went through for, for choosing ad hoc committee members wasn't spelled out or clear. And that my interpretation of three O two was really the appointments and negotiations committee would have. Done that work and brought those recommendations forward and the council would have. You know, in one step, we would have gotten all the names and those would have been public. And then I'm assuming committee work would have happened to make the selection. And then they would have brought forward that recommendation in another council, but we kind of did it differently. Um, so I'm just trying to understand, like, again, that's a gap I saw where now I'm like, well, was that the way we were supposed to do it? Is that our policy for how we, we, um, you know, appoint people to these ad hoc committees only or? Like, just trying to understand, again, just being a new person, as I read this stuff and as I experience things, they're not necessarily coming together.
John, is your question the appointments or the, the actual creation of the ad hoc committees?
I guess both even, like, even to your point, Tom, like, who creates the committees? What's the, the, the process through which we create committees and make that decision? But then through the, the actual selection of folks, again, when I read three O two, it read as if, you know. The appointments and negotiations committee. Get the, get the people who submit their applications, provide those names to the council in one meeting. And then provide the recommendations in the second meeting. But we kind of did it in an executive session where we sat together and did it as a group. Which, you know, I thought was a fine approach, but that's just not what I read in three O two. So I'm just trying to understand, like, do we need to just be clear that that's our approach and policy for how we're staffing ad hoc committees? Or is that, does that transcend to all committees where we do those in an executive session? Just trying to understand the process.
That's a really good point. I, I think was the first time you did it that way for the community center?
Yes, yep.
So I, I, I think generally the council thought it went well, where we wound up with a good committee, we had a good, it was balanced, had a good discussion. And I think when the downtown and charter committees were brought up, I think it was the desire of council to do it that way again. At the end of the day, the council appoints the committee, um. Uh, so I, I guess you could say this is a pilot, we're, we're, we're in our third pilot for how we appoint ad hoc committees now and. It may be that if we, if we still think that it seemed to go well, we might want to adopt our policy or something for how you.
Yeah, I would say the difference in my mind and why the council as a whole took up the appointments for the ad hocks is that. You're, you're comprising the committee all at once, so you're doing, you know. Um, en masse, uh, appointments, if you will, you're also, uh, have a very specific task and so you're. Uh, in my mind, more interested than other times arguably in someone's particular skill set to accomplish that task. And I guess the executive session nature of things is that, um, as you discuss in that various candidates. I think you need to treat them as though they're almost as an employee of the town and that, you know, you don't want to disparage them in a public meeting saying. Inadvertently that someone isn't qualified or, or what have you. So I think that, that's how it qualifies for executive session discussion. Whether you need to modify that or have the council consider things and processes on a case by case basis, I think that's fine too.
Yeah, I think, I, I like the approach. I just, again, when I read three O two, it felt like it was outside of the policy. By the way we approached it, and so just trying to make sure if that is how we're going to do it, that we either modify the policy or. Create a new policy that just make sure that that's, you know, transparent, that that's how we're going to be approaching these things going forward.
Yeah, and that's something we might clarify on the, uh, if, if, if we're ready to do that, that in the charge for the appointments and negotiations committee. We could specify that it, it's the, and it may actually be worded this way now, but it's just town committees, not ad hoc committees.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think it, it probably needs a little cleanup, um, if we were doing a, a new process so that people understand it.
Yeah, I think ad hoc is the distinguishing factor, right? There are single use, uh, single purpose, uh, short duration. Whereas all the other committees that are, that the appointments and negotiations committees tasked with. Um, with working with, uh, are, uh, 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 they're not called standing, but they are. Uh, long-term committees, they aren't single purpose. They exist until the council. Says they don't.
Yeah, I think, I think it's, it's possible, you know, we're maybe on a little bit of shaky ground doing it. An executive session if we're. You know, we do that, we do the standing committees, which arguably people will be, you know, we do those publicly through the ANC. Um, those meetings are all public, so, um, where we discuss different, um, folks, so. Yeah, I think it does need a little discussion.
I do have a legal opinion in support of that. I do have a legal opinion in support of that position, but.
Okay, great. Excellent.
And when I read the.
But that's a, that's an interesting question, though. So like, why, why for appointments? To um. To like the standing committees or whatever we're going to call them. Why can those happen in public, but when it comes to an ad hoc or a new committee? That same. You know. Discussion can't happen publicly. Like, I get, I get, I totally get what you're saying, Tom, from the perspective of it can get, you know. Sensitive based on, you know, individuals being included, but I mean.
No, I think, yeah, it I would just say that I think there's maybe a a level of intensity, a level of scrutiny that's different uh when you're looking at. Assembling a committee for the first time. Just think back to uh your process last month for the downtown and and. Try to review. That would be extremely awkward to be done publicly in terms of, I know this person, I know that person, you know, kind of putting in a pitch and arguing why someone makes the grade or not. I think it helps liberate the council to have a candid discussion. And the proof's in the pudding, you know, i- if you've done that process right, you've got a. A very well-balanced um. Committee that's going to carry out the task at hand.
I guess I would also, I would also say that I don't think it's unheard of for um regular standing committees. Uh, applicants for those committees to actually be discussed in executive session. You know, again, I think that, you know, for the most part, there's a, you know, there's a level of professionalism that. People seem to be very aware of not making any, again, the concern is disparaging comments or something that may um. You know, speak to someone's character or something to that effect. And and so I I don't think, again, I don't think it's unheard of for other towns or or cities to to conduct those discussions in executive session.
It, I think there's not a lot of demand on the the town committees, right? We don't usually have. Like five candidates going for one spot.
Yeah, Betsy, you can attest to that. We're lucky to have a candidate to fill a vacancy. Uh, it's not as if there's huge competition.
Right, yeah, no, I I I think, you know, it just, it's worth um. You know, maybe looking at this, how we're doing it, the policy, and then, you know, the value of bringing that discussion for, you know, to some extent, even just through our discussion today and any. Anything we might recommend to the um, the the council as a whole. Would be, you know, if residents do have, you know, questions or issues on it, you know, they would be able to say, well, you know. They they'd be able to give public input, we shouldn't shouldn't do it this way. I think, you know, I'm 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 pretty um. Pretty persuaded that the process does work and that, you know, we we can do it, but um, yeah, I think. It would, especially if it's in conflict with our policy, saying that, you know, it's not real clear of how we're going about doing it. You know, I think it'd be better to have it. And then, you know, people get a chance to say, you shouldn't do it that way. Uh, and then we get a chance to hear them say why they think we shouldn't do it that way. But then, once it's a policy, we we're on really solid ground, you know, to say, look, we voted on this, you know, this went through the public process, and this is how we are doing the ad hoc committees, and this is why, and. You know, we'll have it on the record. Um, so. I think that would definitely be something worth worth looking at as we go forward. So that's probably a good um uh segue into um talking about the future. Um, I'd like to suggest that. Um, you know, we kind of work in a smaller group, um, you know, between ourselves, you know, to. For uh, maybe I sit down with Liam and he gets a chance to cut, since we talked about a lot of things today. Or maybe Liam and Tom, if they're able to do it and um, because I know they always help me get my. Get my thoughts together about how to go forward. On um, you know, tackling some of this work as a committee and then um. Then I put something out to you guys about, you know, input or, you know, what your feedback is on, you know, how you want to work on it. After, you know, perhaps, you know, I get it framed a little bit better as the committee chair. For what we might tackle next, or, you know, how we might go about um looking at some of these things. Maybe it's just a list. We say, here, here's the list we're going to chunk through. Maybe it's a a standing um. A standing long list, you know, that uh, you know, kind of the way the BOE does it, you know, okay, I mean, you know. Probably know in January of two thousand and twenty-two which policy they're going to be looking at, right? Because it just kind of goes chunk, 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 right through the, right through the list. And if it doesn't need any, if everybody looks at it and says, we don't need to look at it, it just comes right off the list. So I don't have, um, you know, it certainly. Take discussion now and any input um after the meeting about, you know, any ways that that uh. You are interested in going forward, or I'm happy to work with um Liam and Tom and kind of maybe make some suggestions and frame, frame some thoughts, so. What?
I like, I like the idea, Betsy, of maybe what we were talking about earlier of bundling. Like policies and creating a twenty twenty-one. Roadmap for review, again, just to make sure that we're. You know, somehow prioritizing which ones we want to review and when. And then again, even if it's more like, if if it's a policy that's less than three years old, say. That might not require review, like, we don't need to review the CEA policy again, since we just approved it. But like, what the maybe more outdated ones that just might be worth just kind of doing what you suggested, which is the three of us review or all of us review and. See if there's any changes that need to happen, and maybe nine times out of ten for all of these, it's going to be, no, it's good, keep it the same. So I think that would be a nice thing to kind of work through and and have for twenty twenty-one. Um, and then I think too, like. You were saying, it it feels like there's probably an opportunity. To kind of like take a step back and just um think about. Policy creation, updates, um retirement. Like, what does that look like? Just to kind of have that, and I don't know if that needs to come first so that we're aligned on. How we 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 do all that before we go in and start reviewing policies to see what's what's. Maybe um where there might be some gaps that might help us as we kind of do the review. Um, and then I think. When it comes to. Three oh two and three oh two A, like, I'm I'm not sure yet, like, I don't have an opinion yet on like what we want to do there. I mean, three oh two could just be part of that roadmap of we need to review three oh two. Um, as part of that, just to make sure it's still relevant, and three oh two A. Again, that could be another thing where we just bucket that with with it to say we're going to review that as well and kind of come up with some recommendations for some thoughts.
Liam, can you scroll up to the charge for rules and policy?
Yeah. Here you are.
So I I want to make sure that we're staying in. So uh, you you know, with the way I read this, and I guess we should, we could probably talk about it, is that we're we're charged with. It says we shall, we need to review the policies in chapter one oh one. And chapter three oh two from time to time to ensure that it's in compliance with state law and the local charter. I I'm not really reading that as saying we should review for changes that we think make sense or or good. It's kind of specific to. Does it comply with state law in the local charter? So that I. I don't know how big our box is, I guess, is what I'm saying, is as a committee without actually amending what our charge might be.
Well, I think that's that's the question that I would raise, though, John, is like. Then what what falls within scope for new policy creation? Is it only when there's a state law that we need to abide by? And I would. Wonder if like some of the stuff I saw in there, like the um holiday sign policy and the social media policy. There's probably no state law or charter. To tie that to, yet we've created a policy, so. Is it that we need to look at this charge and modify the charge to reflect what we're doing, or? Again, when you look at some of these policies, are they not meeting it? And, you know, what do we want to do there?
We we probably just need to get consent to council. So thi- this is our standing charge, right, that is um been codified? That's always subject to change. So if council wants us to expand our scope or work on other things, and I I think we just need to do that with consent. It doesn't need to be in action, but I think we just need to inform them that what we're going to be looking at and make sure that there's no. Dissenters.
And I, you know. Wouldn't wouldn't be opposed to updating this if, you know. If we seem to have the consent and we ask for kind of a pilot roadmap. Um, and codifying some of this a little bit more, and then if that's working, that we um. You know, that we permanently change this, you know. I think it's probably only a couple of other sentence, maybe one other sentence that you would need to to bring it up. To bring it up to speed, or we might do some of the work and decide, you know what, this isn't working. This is nothing that rules and policies needs to be doing.
So up to would be our goals meeting um in January with the council, you know, this is something the committee wants to. Here and we'll get your. Their buy-in that it's a priority, then that'd be a good way to go about it, too.
Right.
Just one one other thing I was thinking about, too, more as I was looking at three oh two A, that was a question I have. Um, and it's probably more of like a strategic question for later this year, not not tomorrow or in the near term, but. As the um comprehensive plan comes together. You know. That might be an opportunity to kind of evaluate the committees, but also to see if there's gaps in committees that need to be formed. To address some of the key things that come out of the charter. I guess my question would be, like, who, which committee, or how how do we as a council? Do that assessment to to then decide, oh, we need a committee on X or a committee on Y that maybe we don't have today. That might make sense coming out of the comprehensive. Like, is that part of the three oh two A or part of like? Something else that we need to kind of. Determine, you know, what's the process for. Evaluating the committees, like, how do we evaluate the committees? I know we have to evaluate the committees, but how do we actually do that? And does the comprehensive plan, every time it's updated, you know. Require a review of committees?
John, I think that probably will come up in the context of the implementation discussion of the cop plan. There needs to be a, not a person, but a a body designated to kind of shepherd that process. I would expect they would do kind of a full analysis of what is our existing resources, staff and committee. Uh, how might we parcel this workout? Because clearly. Implementation will require um the input of many, many people um. That have an expertise and time to spend on the particular, you know, subject matter. And through that, there might be a gap analysis, right, that's done and and that we really are like in this area and need to. Create some. Some uh further capacity.
Mm-hmm, or it could be potentially broadening the charge. Maybe of some existing committees for things that maybe they're not responsible for today.
Yeah, that's a good point.
They might want to expand their scope.
I mean, the way I see that, and I don't want to get off on the tangent of comprehensive plan, but the way I see that. Uh, I could see one or more of our existing committees uh being tasked with, you know, on climate change issues, coming up with a. You know, uh, resiliency or a a adaptation plan. That might take years for these groups to kind of work through that. And I would expect that those would be very detailed, very fine-grained, maybe very specific recommendations. Of course, all of that's approved by council, but. That's the way I see that work going on over the next decade.
Yeah, and I think just in terms of, this is a little bit of an unsequitur to that, but. Um, Liam, if you go back to to one oh one, um, the list, um. There's a sprinkler policy in here. And I know in the com plan, it talks about um. Changing an ordinance to include a sprinkler. Uh, requirement within certain um town uh uh zones. And so that would be an example, I think, of this sprinkler policy um. Not really fitting anymore with um. You know, an ordinance, and so if we look at our specific charge, it doesn't really say. You know, or find overlaps or things like that. Um, but I would think that that might be something that that could be added. So I think it's careful, I think we have to be careful. I agree with you, John. I don't think we should get too uh cliche. We shouldn't get too far out of the box. But I think there's a little more that uh that we could expand about um. You know, besides just charter and state law, that would probably make sense, but not be like, oh, we're just going to like open up every single policy and like, you know, we don't like this and we're going to take that, you know, like. I I I hear what you're saying, Clutchy, like, we're not trying to go there, you know? So I I think there's just probably a little bit more we could propose, but I think um we really need to frame it right, because I don't think peo-, you know, I don't think it's going to be well received if people think we're trying to open a Pandora's box. Um, and just, you know, really jump into the middle of every single policy that's already passed, so. Does does that make sense, Clutchy? Is that kind of what you were saying? I mean. You know, I I I, that is definitely not what I want to do. I don't I don't want to be in the middle of every every policy and opening every policy, but where there's. You know, you know, let's say something gets codified for pest management, you know, um into a zone and an ordinance. As we would be going through that policy, we would say, well, you know, this needs to change in the pest management ordinance policy, or this policy needs to be cleaned up because now it's taken care of in this ordinance type thing.
Yeah, I I mean, honestly, Betsy, I would probably support making our charge broader, um, because somebody probably should be looking at those things. Um. So I I'm not saying that it's a bad thing to do. It's just, it's not the way it's worded right now, so we just need to make sure that we get consent.
Right, yeah, and I just think it's careful how we word it, because I don't want, I don't think it should be too broad. I think I think there is, you know, um, but. So it it's a fine line, I guess. I I'd like to give it some more thought, but I definitely appreciate. What you guys have said. It's a really good discussion. So I don't like me leaving meetings super open-ended without uh, you know, specific. Specific actions we're going to do next time, but um with this one, it feels pretty broad to me. So I personally would like a little more time to think about how to how to frame this going forward. Um, is that uh okay with folks, or um is there something that um you'd like to? Say for sure at the next meeting, we want to do X, Y, Z?
I think it would be good at the next meeting. Assuming it's happening before our goal-setting meeting as a council.
Yeah.
That we align on what maybe some of the goals are for this committee. I know, John, you have that as an agenda item for finance. And I think it would just be good. For each committee, like, I brought that up as a recommendation at the communications committee yesterday, I think, too, or we're planning to do that. But again, I don't know if that's going to align, if the dates are going to align, we'll be where we will be ready to do that for the goal-setting meeting. But it would be nice, at least for us to come prepared. We could be like, the action is that the three of us. I don't know if we need a separate meeting or an earlier meeting before that, just to kind of align. But come into that aligned on what are some of the things we might want to share in that goal-setting workshop.
Okay, great. So why don't I check the dates on that? And if you guys are willing, maybe we could have an out-of-sequence meeting to get ready for that um goal-setting meeting?
Yeah, it it might, I don't know if it'll require another meeting, Betsy. I I feel like we kind of got close to there today. I think we're. Uh, pretty much in agreement that we should review the, you know, organizational structure of the policies. And go through them. Um, that that's not a bad goal for the course of the year. Uh, it it is something that I would support. If you want to kind of take some time and try to. Make it a little more succinct or formulated, it it might just be a matter of sharing it with us and then. And then at least we're going into that council goal-setting meeting with um. Uh, you know, there's been some pre-work done. Uh, we've given it some thought and discussion already, and we're not just kind of picking things out of out of. The moment. Uh, so I think it's good that we had this discussion before that meeting anyways, but. I I would be supportive if you wanted, you know, like you suggested, work with Tom and and Liam to kind of just. Get a plan together. I think we're pretty well-aligned.
Just from a timing standpoint, um, so we typically meet the the first Tuesday of the month at eight thirty, so I believe that the proposed goal-setting. With the council, is that slated for Saturday the ninth or or after? So so we we still would have convened one more time prior to that, that meeting anyway.
Okay, great. Okay, all right.
Can I just make a um, an impassioned plea? I've got three of the seven members of council and and I'll have a similar conversation with um. Different committees in the full council I certainly have had with leadership. I just um, I I guess I must express, I'm feeling a bit overwhelmed with what's kind of on our plate. So I I simply ask if there's a way to relieve, and this is mu- is much for you. I mean, you guys are volunteers here. Um, let's be thoughtful and strategic about where you spend your time and effort. Because we've got a lot of really important stuff in front of us that I I don't want to. Lose sight of, and um something's got to give, and so um. I just offer that up as you think about what the next twelve months look like. I think our next six months are really intense in my in my aspiration.
I do agree with that, Tom. I um, serving in this position and also some others, I think. It is always really difficult to deal with the mundane. And I I admire the way BOEs around the country do it. Because it's just built into the process to continue review policies. It's mundane um work, but um. It's mundane um work, but um it it's just, it's all built in. So I think if we could get to that point where it's codified, this this type of work is easy to always put off. I mean, who wants to do it? It's like going to the dentist, no offense to Dennis. So um.
Well, there are an hour, Betsy.
Ha, do what?
I'm going to the dentist in an hour.
Oh, so, so, you know, it's it's or like getting a new roof. It's really, it's not exciting, but you know, I mean, we don't, I think the big thing is we, you know, we don't need to speed. We don't have a super hard deadline, you know, um. But I think we could, I I would suggest we kind of try to plod on it. Um, but, you know, I'm definitely sympathetic to all the things that we've got going on.
And let's bring Tody, Tody into this conversation. I think she will be able to shed some light in terms of how better to organize uh some things. This is, this is the world she lives in. So um, she might be able to advance this, many of the points talked about today um, much quicker than we can.
Yeah, a- a- and I I I think the the council goal setting meeting, Tom, hopefully will help set some of, narrow some of the focus there. I, you know, all we can do as a committee is make a pitch for what's important from rules and policies from our discussion. And it may be that doesn't make the cut in terms of priorities for or a council goal this year.
Yeah, or just maybe.
Put them together.
Or maybe it's not, you know, it's not the level of a council goal. Again, it's more setting up a process that just starts flowing and stays in place, um, you know, for perpetuity until the next rules and policy says, hey, we're not going to do this anymore. But it becomes more of a, an ongoing process, i- i- if we can define it, um, that, you know, like I said, you can probably look at the the policies and committees for BOE and see, you know, January two thousand twenty-two, what policy's on the list to be reviewed, you know? Um, it just something that just kind of goes along as as the work of the committee. Um, and maybe there's a higher goal that wouldn't make the cut um in terms of the, there's a bigger job we want to do, but.
Hmm. I think it's just about, to Tom's point, I think it's a very fair point, and it's just about managing the intensity and setting good expectations for ourselves. If you don't set a goal that we can't meet, so that if as we set goals to John's point, as we have that discussion, we might be able to go back and say, look, all we can do this year likely as a rules and policy committee, given all we have on our plate is review the fiscal policies we have in one oh one. And that's kind of what we're going to try and do and just make that our goal to be realistic. So I mean, I think I agree with Tom that like, based on what we have to do, what we agree is our priorities, making sure that, you know, to your point, Betsy, we're still advancing the cause and and doing the work, but maybe just not at the intensity at which we would in a a less busier year.
Yeah, there'll never be a less busy year.
Yeah, yeah, that's really.
Um, but uh, yeah, I mean, I would even, we'll see how it turns out, but I would even be happy with a goal of, you know, this is the process that we're going to follow to get all the policies reviewed. I mean, even that would be a win, and that's not, it doesn't sound like a huge, a huge accomplishment. But even setting those wheels in motion for future years, you know, that might be all we accomplish, you know? And I I think that would be a good, a good win. I, you know, and so, okay. All right, well, I sorry, I kept people a little overtime. Um, is there anything anybody else wants to add? Do we have anybody from the public? Liam or any public comments? I don't, I don't see that we do.
We don't have any public attendees.
Only panelists, um. Uh, does anyone have anything else?
No.
Does anyone ma- want to make a motion to um dismiss, adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Uh, councillor Clutchy?
Yes.
Uh, councillor Anderson?
Yes.
Um, and I'm councillor Gleising, and I also vote yes to adjourn. Thank you very much. Much appreciated.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You too.